Welcome to Pocatello Let's Talk About Something with Paul Schmidtline and my co-host Ben Gregerson's here today. Councilman Jim Johnson and candidate Barbara Orr running for city council. Today's show is about the city council and get to know our candidates. One of the things I think about the city council is, I was talking with Ben and I think it's probably the most important position in our, really in our city government. And to me, I think it has more influence in my life personally than a presidential election, a senate election, the governor's election, because our city council directly influences my taxes and they influence the policies that are set forth in the place where I reside. And so I think it's vital for everyone to get to know the candidates. There's been lots of times when I've gone and I've gone to the polls and I, well, I wasn't as formed as I could have been. I voted for people because they were, my friends knew them or just because they had more signs than someone else and, you know, I think that's a bad way to go. And so, to be honest, that's one of the reasons why I'm doing this show is so I can get to know the candidates and hopefully there's some viewers out there like me who, when we get to know you, will get a feel for who you are and if you'll truly represent my vote.
Paul, that's really an excellent observation that you've made because the best government is the government that's closest to us and I firmly believe that. And there are many who have no idea what takes place at City Hall. So, I'm glad you're doing what you're doing. I'm glad to be here with you.
And I totally agree with that because the closer government is, the more it affects our wallet, the more it affects our lives. And a lot of times, people don't know what areas of government govern what because all powers for different levels of government are limited. And the city is limited to the city limits here. The city council and the mayor, we govern basically what's here within the city limits and with cooperation with different things from other areas, but pretty much it's just the city limits. But it affects your wallet and your taxes more than any other entity in this area.
You know, I would agree with that too and I do feel like the local citizens, I think they need to get a better feel of what's going on locally and how important it is because we've had, we've had a number of elections here that I've noticed where only 3,000 or 4,000 people, you know, go out and vote when Pocatello's got, what, 30,000, somewhere around there?
It's about 29,000 registered voters in this, in this area, potential voters. And unless we get this a little more exciting real soon, this would be a low turnout election. Even though there are three seats in Pocatello that are up, there aren't any really big major issues that I can see, other than finances, that people are talking about.
You know, I gotta concur with you on that, Jim. Because before the show, I mean, there's some, there's some issues that I, that I have, alright. And my psychiatrist could probably tell you about those, but yeah. But as far as city issues go, when I've gone out there and I've talked to the people and I've, I said, you know, "I'm gonna meet with some council members and candidates, what do you want me to ask them?" And I talked to a man named Ed this morning and Ed said, "You know, I've lived in Pocatello for 50 years." And he thinks things are going great, you know? He's really happy with the way the city is right now. And so as far as big issues, yeah, I don't know. What do you think, Ben?
There's, you know, there's a lot of things, if you let me interrupt, there's a lot of things that are really good about Pocatello, but I've lived here for 38 years and for 38 years, I've heard a couple of mantras. One of them is, "A big business room outside is gonna come in and save us all." The other one is, "If you build it, they will come." Well, neither of those things is true and I think we really need to change direction in Pocatello and really look at some policy changes. Because we really need to support our small businesses, the businesses that's here, and help what we've got here grow and help more come in. And there are some real policy changes that we need to make to help that happen.
For example?
For example, we need to change some things that we do with our permit process in planning and zoning. We have, and it's evolved over 100 years. It's really nobody's fault, but it's occurred where we have a permit process when someone wants to go in to do a development, to bring a business or to build a building here. It's a convoluted permit process where it might take them six months. Sometimes, I know of one that took two years to get a permit. Well, anything that delays business is very unhealthy for this community. And part of it is because we just have a process that's evolved over time. At the beginning here, the railroad built most of this town, to begin with. There were great buildings here. Some of them are still, most of them, as a matter of fact, are still in use that the railroad built. But over time, the mayors and the councils, over 100 years, have made exceptions to different rulings. So it's, it's become a convoluted process. So, when a person goes in to get a permit, instead of the city people being able to tell them what they can do, they tell them what they can't do. So they have to go back and forth and back and forth. This is something we can really change and we can really improve on.
Well, I would defend the process to this extent. You have to start somewhere.
Right.
And so, we have a great city, we have great city employees, and the employees, from time to time, are confronted with some of these challenges and they do come to us. Right now, we're reviewing in great measure, the sign ordinance.
Good.
And so, we've got a lot of things going on and as a city councilman, I have found that I've had to really study and really talk to people to find out what, what is best for Pocatello. Sometimes we've made mistakes and we have to reevaluate and it's hard to admit when you've made a mistake.
Well, and sometimes things happen simply because the communication doesn't get all the way through.
Good point.
I mean, those, those things really happen and we, with, well, the sign with Phil Meter is a great example of the convoluted situation. Because you just gave an exemption because the situation was there where they couldn't decide to allow him to move the sign. He owns the big sign on Yellowstone. He just wanted to move it around the corner. Well, everything was, was there, but they couldn't, the, the city couldn't give him permission to do that. And then he said, "Well, I'll make a smaller sign and I'll put that in front of my new facility and, and take out the old one." Well, they couldn't let him do that because again, the process has been too convoluted. And so the city council did give him permission to do that, but basically our sign ordinance needs to be clear enough where he could just go in, get his permit and have it done with, you know? And so, I'm so glad you're reviewing that because it's, it's, it's a good thing. And things have to be set up to where they're not subjective. One of the problems that we really have with the sign ordinance is that, there's no problem with setting up size of a sign or setting up, if it's a reader board, it needs to be just eight minutes so it doesn't distract the traffic or, you know, location away from the road so it doesn't disturb the traffic. No problem with any of those things, you know, to set up the size of a sign. But, we cannot be subjective about what a person puts on that sign. Because the purpose of a sign is to attract business to a business and we can't be so subjective that we, we, as a matter of fact, I know of one incident where they demanded that a, a business redo their logo because they didn't like it. And that kind of stuff is just totally unacceptable. And it's only because the situation is subjective. If we didn't care about what's on the sign, just the size and the location, fine. We have to take the subjective stuff out of it because it just creates too much confusion and it creates too much expense and difficulty for our businesses. So, that's one of, one of the policy areas that I would like to see changed is I wanna see what we do simplified to the things that are really important in each area. And one area that we have, where we have a real problem, is drainage, especially on the hills where we, we build buildings, the drainage must be captured in that area so it doesn't run down the hill to, under other buildings. That's really important. Well, in the past, we have not had, the, the standard can be subjective and we do not want it to be subjective. That's an area where we wanna make sure that every building that's built, that water is captured and, and an appropriate drain system is put in. Because we don't want people building higher up on the hills endangering buildings that are down below. And so, some of these things can't be overcome by council vote. We have to have some things that are set in stone, that everybody agrees on, and that way then it's healthy for everybody. And again, these are just, these are just policy changes and, and with people of goodwill working together, it's really easy to come up with things that are just right and things that just make sense. A lot of these things that occur have just occurred over time, you know? And sometimes when things occur over time, we sort of look at them like they're set in concrete, but they're not. They're not. They can be done in more sensible ways.
You know, one thing that I've noticed, Barbara, you know, I've gone to council meetings and I loved how the councils worked pretty well together at the last council. Now Jim, as far as your time goes...
Cool, I got it.
Let's, uh, let's take a second and, hi Kevin, go ahead and have a seat.
Over there?
Yeah. But we may move you in a second. So Jim, the floor's yours. Let's, uh, let's hear about Jim Johnson, who you are, your experience and why you're running for city council. How, how many terms have you done already?
I was appointed to the city council to fill an unexpired term and then was elected four years ago. So, it's been a, it's been a great privilege for me to be involved in city government. I've been a real estate professional in this community for 44 years. I've really had the opportunity to see Pocatello at its best and its worst. We have some real cycles up and down. So I've been able to weather those as a small business person and it's been challenging many times, but I've been really appreciative of the quality of life that there is in Pocatello and I wanted to preserve that. And so I wanna do what I can to make sure we continue to have this great community functioning as it does. I think, you know, there are a lot of people that go fishing and hunting and hiking and cycling. My avocation has been to serve. And I've really been involved in the community in many, many ways. You know, when my children were young, I was a PTA president. As they've gotten older, I've had the opportunity to be very involved in Rotary, very involved in my church. I do a lot with the Chamber of Commerce. I have been a director with the American Red Cross for the whole state, done a lot with the Realtor Association. And so, community service has been a big thing for me, united way. I just think that I have as good a feel for this community as anyone that's on the city council or that is running. And so I feel I can be a representative of the entire community rather than a narrow segment. I've learned how important it is to work with all elements. There are people in the community that did not like the stand that I took on one particular issue and some of those people haven't forgiven me yet, but I voted my conscience. I did what I felt was right and I think people can count on me to be consistent. I'm not gonna be a waffler. And so, when decisions are there to be made, I know how to make a decision. And that's one of my good qualities, I think. I feel like I have a listening ear and I take time to listen. As other people have good ideas, I wanna see those good ideas implemented. I don't think I'm the, have a corner on the market when it comes to all the good ideas. So I'm willing to listen to other people. And our council has worked very, very well together. We've debated, debated things thoroughly and we've been able to listen to each other and, and make things happen. I think that's probably one of the most important things. We have six city council people and a mayor. If we're 50/50 on an issue, the mayor casts the deciding vote. But, what has happened is the mayor hasn't had to do that because we're all so different and I think it's important to have a variety of people serving in city government so everyone feels they're represented. We serve as liaisons to the boards and commissions and those are rotated so that we are very well-informed as to what's taking place. I think if people will vote for me for returning to the city council, that their vote will be appreciated and I'll be able to do a service to this community that is needed.
Well, Jim, I do have a question. I've had a concern for a while that, I personally feel that the tax rates and the fees are too high in this community and it's not really the, the best thing for, for businesses or raising revenues. And to me, it seems like whenever people wanna raise revenues, whenever there's a budget crisis, they just wanna raise the fees or raise the taxes. And I personally feel like that's the wrong way to go. I think the best way to go is to lower the fees and lower the taxes and make it a more friendlier environment for business because when you bring those new businesses in, those new businesses are taxpayers. They pay taxes into the system and not to mention, they hire people and hopefully the goal there is to increase people's, you know, incomes. Because you wanna, I think if you wanna increase revenue in a community, you really wanna help people move up the income bracket. Because if people are making more, they're gonna pay a little bit more in taxes anyways. So I think we need to lower taxes, grow the economy, see the, the incomes rise and, and see more businesses come in here and contribute to the, to the tax system.
That's an excellent observation. I think it's important for us to realize that right now, we at least have been able to maintain the levy at a flat, slight drop this year for the upcoming budget, which is encouraging, I think. In the process of getting to that point, we realized that we really need to evaluate what we are investing in with, with our, with our city. And so, we're taking two days a month to concentrate on reevaluating where we're spending money in every single budget.
Great.
In, in the, in the city. And it's been really painful. We put essentially a similarity to a hiring freeze so that the city council is reevaluating every single appointment that the mayor makes. The mayor has the power to appoint people. The recommendations come from the various departments and bureaus. Well, we're looking at every single one of those. Is it essential? Is it in the best interest of the community to continue to pay for this service? And so, that is one of the most exciting things we've done and we're finding out that we really do have good employees. We have a lot of people doing a lot of great things. I mean, I can tell you things about this city. Do you know how much it costs for, well, let's just say 10 gallons of water? How much does it cost in Pocatello for 10 gallons of water? Two cents. So, for every two cents, you get 10 gallons of water. Well, I was in my office and we had a drip that was going like that, a drip every second. And so I, I went to the water department and I said, "How much is that costing us?" And they know those things. If you have a drip, a small drip of water, one every second, for one year, that's gonna cost you 3,000 gallons of water. And you figure that, at two cents for 10 gallons, that's fairly significant. So we have to be responsible, be and conserve. That's just a little thing, but we all can be contributors by not being wasteful. I can remember when we used to have somebody that came along and kinda swept the streets, you know, an individual person. And I, I thought that was great, but I think it's better if we as citizens pick up after ourselves and pick up after someone else. I watched the activity at our dog park over on Union Pacific Avenue. Those people pick up after those dogs. They're proud of that dog park. They wanna use it and it's very valuable in our community. So, I think it's an attitude and we have to not only be the smile capital of the world, but we can be the cleanest city too by each picking up after themselves. So, there's a lot of great things that are happening, but yeah, we've got to make the budget tighter.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear that.
One of the things that I hope we look at is cost per use with various things because times have changed. And one of the situations that we have now that is, it's one of these things that's so obvious, people miss it. We are supporting now nine entertainment venues. We have more than 27 parks. We've got lots of miles of greenways and, you know, our city looks beautiful, but we have 18,500 children in this community and they're all confined. They don't get to use these things, you know? They're, they're either in school or they're at home. They have to be with their parents. Both of their parents are working, so they, people have a few hours on the weekend. And when you go out in this community, you'll find crowds at the soccer fields, you'll find them at the mini dome when there's a game on. You'll even find some at the senior citizen center, but all the other venues that we have are, are there, but we don't have, the times have changed.
They, they've changed.
So they're wonderful, they're wonderful to have. What we've got is wonderful to have, but we shouldn't be building anymore because the times have changed.
One of the, one of the really great things, and you've drawn attention to this, is the fact that more should be self-sustaining. Well, I don't think we can charge a fee to come and use a city park.
No.
But, if somebody's golfing, they have to, that has to be self-sustaining.
Right.
The swimming pool needs to be self-sustaining. The rec center needs to be self-sustaining.
The zoo.
And, and so we look at all of these things. And the zoo's a great example. I've heard some comments that that was city money. There was $2 million that was raised from private sources to put in the new grizzly exhibit. I spent $2,000 one day, the first day that the grizzly bear was there, they had this thing and I got caught up in the emotion. Who would like to buy the privilege of squirting honey there for the bear to go into the zoo? I got carried away, spent $2,000, but it was my contribution to the grizzly bear exhibit. I'm grateful that my profession has permitted me to do that. But that was not city money. It was private money that created that grizzly bear exhibit.
Right, and as long as we're doing that and we're not buying any more property to do it, I don't have a problem with it. But I do have a problem when we keep building things for the city and taking that land off the property taxes.
Yeah, I'm opposed to that too.
Because then that puts it on us.
But, the real, the real challenge for us is there are people that build something and then expect the city to take it over.
And we can't do that.
We can't do that.
No. We've done that for years and it's just not right. I am in encouraging people to no longer donate to tax-supported entities for building projects that do exactly that, where they take it off the, the tax rolls. We simply can't afford it. I mean, we really can't. We've, we have plenty of things to use. We have enough venues and things here. We could support actually a city of 200,000 people with what we've got, especially with that beautiful new center that Portniv just donated to us, which is absolutely gorgeous. Well, we don't have 200,000 people, so we just need to be a little more realistic going forward.
Well, what we have to do is make Pocatello a destination city.
There we go.
I think if people, I mean, there are native animals, native to Idaho at our zoo. There are a lot of people that should come off that interstate and come see our zoo for our native animals. And, and I think our water facility, our water features there at Ross Park, awesome. We just need to get people coming off that freeway and helping support our, our economy. And the Wellness Center's a good example, that's a destination. I think Brooklyn's Playground is a destination.
That's a really nice thing.
This is part of our community.
Right.
And I'm proud of it. Really proud of the people that have done that. I mean, I was involved with putting in the Chief Pocatello statue. I am proud of that. Every time I go by, I'm so grateful that it hasn't been defaced.
Yeah, it looks great.
It does look great.
It looks great.
And in your neighborhood, you know what we did to make that important.
Well, and that's true and it is, it is pretty cool, actually. I, I like it and, you know, speaking of...
Hundred percent volunteer dollars.
Yeah.
Hundred percent.
Speaking of destination, I guess, a destination city, you know? Personally, I'd like to see Old Town be a little bit more exciting because...
Yeah, more people come down there and buy houses from me. That would really be good.
It would be and, and, you know, I, I think Old Town's got a lot of potential. I remember visiting an Old Town back east, I think it was in Maryland.
I was working on my truck and I didn't get a chance to change.
But I mean, there was all, it was practically a mall because all those old buildings had stores just filled in them. There weren't any empty buildings. There was something going on and there were just tons of people there, tourists and, I mean, it was an exciting place to be, you know? And that Old Town, it was like a hub and I actually, I saw the same thing in Oklahoma City, you know, this, during the summer when I was selling pest control there. They've got an Old Town there that's, you know, it's vibrant and it's exciting and it's cool. Now...
The First Friday Art Walk is a great example of what can happen. And Barbara's involved with art, so she knows, but that is a great location on the First Friday of every, every month to see excitement in Old Town. It just needs to happen about 30 days a week. I mean, 30 days a month.
Well, maybe every Friday.
Well, and, and some of the policy changes too might help some of the developers downtown to, to do some of the things they wanna do.
Well, you take an old building, it has to have a sprinkling system. That's expensive.
Yeah, it's, well, it's, it's impossible.
Yeah, it is.
It is impossible and we need to really look at that because, you know, those old buildings, those old buildings are safer by nature than any of the new houses up on the hills by the cedar trees.
Yeah, the thing that is, you know, the, well, it's like several of the ones that have burned down and stuff through the years, you know, instead of being rebuilt, they've been just demolished and such. Of course, some of them have been beyond repair. But, you know, the thing that is that I find disheartening is a lot of the things that you see in Old Town that aren't so nice. You know, some of the things that go on there. I personally lived in Old Town for some time, for about 12 years. In that term of 12 years, my place got hit three times. Yeah.
Hit.
Hit, yeah. They stole, came in and stole from me. You know what happened? I called the police once and then I never bothered to call them again. I called the police once and then I never bothered to call them again.
Because?
You know, didn't work. You know, promised to call back, called in.
So Kevin...
The, the thing of it is, is, you know, it's all nice and everything, but, you know, I see everything on a different scale and realm than most political people do. I see the people. And I see things that people overlook about all the nice new things we've got. We've got really bad problems here as well as everywhere else. And it's, it's quite disheartening when I go, the other night, I was, I'm working late on my truck. That's why I'm filthy, got a new truck, it's a 48, yep, recycled, that's way, 216, six cylinder, going stock. Anyway, two hype needles in the parking lot. It just, you know, the amount of things that, you know, just seem to keep going on and building. Massive drug use, things like that. And it seems like nobody really wants to do anything about it except to keep it perpetuated for some reason. It just seems to be working that way. A lot of our young children, you know, our laws, the way they're set up now, I mean, you know, by the time you're in fourth grade, you can be a felon, you know, shooting spitwads is no longer cool. You know, this is something that, you know, is one of the things, many things, people not being able to deal with other people. Me, I have to deal with pretty much of a racial thing myself inside myself because, yeah, I'm white on the outside, that's true, and I've got blue eyes. But I'm Cherokee and I have just a little bit of African-American. My family's old school from the South. Of course, I've changed a little bit, I don't display the bars and stars. But yeah, I still have one of those, but it's, you know, yeah, it's a family thing. If it's a family thing, it's in the drawer. Yes, I have one. But, you know, I also have shotguns and all kinds of stuff. And that's the other thing is, is that, you know, there's so much slipping away from us. People don't make complaints. If people have a legitimate complaint, they can't make them because it's like, oh, that's not going to work with society. You know, this, that, the other thing. I've complained about several things through the years. I've even complained to people that were city council members and that's all I got. Or will look into it, you know.
So is that why you're running, Kevin? What do you bring to the citizens?
Well, the citizens, somebody that can actually listen and know the problems from the scale, from the very low bottom all the way to the top, to those that haven't had proper services, to those that have other problems that, you know, with, well, it's like the, you can drive around town and see things that need to be taken care of every day. My neighborhood, other neighborhoods. I mean, you know, convenience stores that don't have proper garbage days, don't have proper containers. You know, it's, I used to take really a lot of pride in my house, but the thing of it is, is that, you know, I'm always picking up garbage. It seems like, you know, so I mow the yard occasionally. I've got that on docket for first of next month.
So you agree with what Jim was saying, that we should not only pick up after yourself, but probably pick up after others?
And if you see a problem and you make a call, somebody should take your concerns, you know, to heart. This has been a problem, I mean, until they're all gotten taken down and stuff in the spring of the year, there'll be three or four or five garbage bags, black garbage bags waving in the trees and blowing down the street. You know, and that's one of the main entries to Pocatello is just on the other side of the convenience store from my house.
So do you think that that's a situation that could be fixed just by having the employees take it more seriously?
Well, I think one of the problems that we have in the city, because there was a house in my neighborhood that was a very serious problem. It, the person had passed away in the house and someone had gotten into the house, pulled all the furniture out of the house and made this huge mess on this corner lot. It was right across from Alameda Park. And I called the city because I was getting very concerned because the weeds were high and it was the Fourth of July. And I called them and they came out and knocked the weeds down, but they never cleaned up the mess. And because this was kind of an unowned property, it was sort of in a black void. It took them a year to clean that property up, an entire year, because they came the next Fourth of July. And I understand his frustration, you know, what he's saying.
Yes, there's a lot of people out there.
Yeah, I think part of it is when you call, it's, what is the department called? It's enforcement of, code enforcement. You call code enforcement and they give you a recording. Well, part of the problem is we're living in times where, and this has happened everywhere in all types of business, and I'm delighted that the city council is starting to go through, through things, department by department, and really look at some of the things that are going on. Because we have a lot of people that are sitting behind computers. Some of that is absolutely necessary in our time, but I think we honestly need more boots on the ground. We need more people that get out in the community.
You just walk around, you can see the problems. You don't have to go on the computer and Google what the problem is and how to...
Right, if we have three people in code enforcement, two of them should be out.
Or just somebody that cruises the city, that works for the city council, that can say, "Guys, I was cruising down the alley, there's a crack house just opened up over here. You got a bunch of needles in the backyard, what's up?" Somebody to be taken seriously other than just a citizen. Because citizens don't get taken seriously, it's just a problem.
I don't, I don't think that's really true. I think what happens is that there's a set pattern of behavior that starts occurring with, with groups of people in, in the city. And then there's not enough communication to change that. Because the communication has to come from the people to change that. And one of the things that I've done recently, I've probably talked to 100 business people in the last three weeks. I'm just going out in the community, talking to people. Because it's very important that we make sure our city council people have that information. Because they're the ones that, they're, they're getting information, but they're primarily getting it from the people who are in the city.
The interim, the medium...
That's right. So if we don't go out as city council people and make a regular habit of talking to the citizens...
Cut out the middleman.
We're not, we're not going to have accurate information. Because you have to have it on both ends. Because the, certainly that we've got some wonderful city employees, we've got wonderful people that do great work. But this city has to come to understand the difference between what is valuable and what is productive. They are two different things. Our, our police department, our fire department, our hospital, all of our medical people, they are valuable. Sometimes they are tremendously invaluable, but they are like supporting a standing army. Our businesses are productive. Our, our contractors are productive. Our farmers are productive. All of the people that create wealth in this community are productive. And we have to realize how valuable they are as well.
So I think what you're saying, Barbara, if I hear you right, is our city, like the employees here at Channel 12 and the garbage people, the people who work at the zoo, the police department, these people, they're important.
They're valuable.
They're our standing army and so it takes us to support them.
Absolutely. And that's what's real. That is what is real. And people who create jobs and create wealth, they're like people that have baskets, you know? They're the ones that have the baskets. If we lose them, what they're creating to support everybody else isn't going to be there.
Yeah, the jobs won't be there.
That's right, nothing will be there because that's where everything comes from. And we just have to realize there's got to be a balance between those two things. And we're to the place where, you know, we have, we have some wonderful things here. Let's sustain and take care of what we've got and then look, let's look to see if we can make the city more productive. One of the things I am interested in seeing the city do is to see if it can get into energy development of, of different types. We've got wind generation opportunities available out at the airport. We have hydro opportunities available. We have solar opportunities available. Let's look into that. One of the other things we can look into is seeing if we can get a few engineers to just develop a solar streetlight. We have sun almost every day of the year. That would save us, it would save us millions of dollars just in the city's electric bill.
You know, all that strange you bring up, all that stuff. My father was talking about the very same thing back about 1968, 69, about how, but out at the airport, it's a nice place to go, but you realize that some of these mountains around here, the wind gusts all the time at the tops. It wouldn't be very pretty, but the thing of it is, yeah, he was talking about that way back then. But then again, my father was quite a knowledgeable man and quite well-known. But that was, you know, he was born in 1905 and everything, so he has...
Well, the vision for things is one thing, but getting it into practical reality is another thing.
Yeah, but some of the sites and things that he was suggesting were quite...
To get it into practical reality and there, there are very, there's some really good spots out there.
Oh yeah, you go out south of town, there's some of those tops and mountains that just blows you over all day long.
Now, I, I think to do that...
But the thing of it is, you can't overdo it because it's going to look really ugly.
You'd probably need cooperation with the tribe.
Yeah.
Well...
Well, a lot of it, it just depends on, all of the, all of the things that we can do, they are engineering questions. Right, so once you get to where, once you get to where you have an idea, then it's an engineering question and then again, it's a political question where you have to see, okay, who owns the land? Can we actually do this? The airport is one that I think of because we already have that facility out there. It already is a tax-supported facility. And where we want to build these things is where we already own the land. The city already owns it. Because we don't want to take any more land off of the tax rolls if we possibly can do it.
You know, even though there's some benefits to wind power, because I do think, I mean, obviously it generates power. There's also some drawbacks.
Of course there are.
Because they, they do kill birds and eagles.
There is, there are drawbacks to everything. I, I agree.
I've, I've always wondered though, if there's anything that you know of that might be getting developed that could deter birds. I mean, I don't know how to do that.
Big catcher, like you got the two-year-old stovers out of it.
One advantage of putting them out at the airport is that that's, that's an area that's already pretty bird-free because of the airplanes.
That's a, that's a good point.
You know, because it's not, you know, when you run airplanes in and out, they have a tendency to not...
Well, since we're not engineers and you are politicians, what do you think about your, if you're on the city council? What do you think about the tribe? Seems like right now, my opinion is for how in Pocatello, they're trying to like get over the past and Councilman Tyler's trying to move forward. I think if the two could come together, there could be great synergy between the two. There would be huge economic benefit for our city if that can take place.
Anytime that people work together, especially in our area. You know, we've got a wonderful community and there are, it's tremendously optimistic. You know, the, the city has always been optimistic. It always is trying to do stuff, you know, it's, it's a generous community. I mean, there's, it's a wonderful community to live in. And anytime the community actually gets together and works on anything, it generally gets it done. And that includes the tribe too. I mean, but all of the, just the reality of the fact, this is a separate nation out there. We need to respect it as such. It is a separate sovereign nation. That's who they are. So we respect that and we work with them on that basis. And we don't pretend it's anything else because that is what it is. So, you know, and, and all of the, all of the things that they've done out there to develop, they've, they've developed their area as well, you know? So you just encourage what is there to encourage. And if there's some opportunity for us to work together, it's a good thing to do.
Oh yeah, an opportunity, I think there might be. From what I've heard, the, the tribes, they own some property here in Pocatello.
Yes, they do.
Yeah, I think it would be...
They got pieces and parts here and there. Part one piece is out behind the First National Bar. And, you know, it's like the police used to bug people for parking their Harleys right there by the back door. "Well, sorry, son, but that's part of a sovereign nation." Talk to those guys out there.
Well, it would be, it would be great to encourage them to develop that though, here in our city.
I believe that there's some Native Americans that ride Harleys and probably like having that parking.
That's true, but I, I just think, I mean, I've been to Jackson Hole and there's some great... There's some great Indian shops that sell really cool stuff.
Right.
You know, lots of cool Native American jewelry and all kinds of stuff.
Copper bracelets, copper rings.
Yeah, and I just think that that would be something that would be attractive to people here in Pocatello. But it would also be an economic benefit for both Pocatello and, and the Native Americans on the, on the Indian reservation.
Well, and it would make perfect sense if there was a location close to the hotels or if we could develop a, we need something in the community to help tourists stay another night. That's one of the things that we might be able to develop. Because if we could do something like that and then allow, you know, where there's a storefront or someplace where, where a person that wanted to make that venture that was in the tribe would bring... But they have to have the location where the traffic is going to be there for that to be viable. You know, so you just have to look at...
What we need is somebody that has probably grown up around Native Americans and their family, that's been raised by Native Americans, would probably help with those kind of ties, I would think. Yeah, that would be me.
All right, well, there you go, Kevin. There's, there's an appeal to the voters for you.
Well, the thing of it is, is that my family, see, after the Trail of Tears, they, my folks wound up in, down around Howell County, Missouri, in the edge of Arkansas and on down in there. And down there, there's, it's different than it is here. Now, being off the reservation, see, my great-great-grandmother was one that fell off the trail, the knowing. And she passed things down over, you know, and in my family, the way they run it back there is, if you're of the family, you're kin to the family and then the family is the clan. And then, you know, then there's the, after you're the course there, you can go on and become kind by doing deeds and tasks and things and such. And that gives you other things. And then you, some have the knowing, which is on above that, which is pretty powerful stuff. And it says, it's said that some of the people that have the knowing go crazy and stuff because it's too much for the human mind to actually wrap around. And there's all kinds of things that are in it, like, you know, the end of days, clocks and everything else. So, you know, then that's, you know, so, but yeah, considering that my family consists of white and, which is, I'm sorry, guys, you know, I didn't pick the color of my skin, but it has kept me safe and out of jail a few times.
Good. I, I think one of the things that Ben and I would both encourage all the council members...
Dress clean when we come to these things. Right on, got it.
Is to make Pocatello a destination site. Ben talked about people shopping in Jackson Hole for trinkets, beads, beadwork, I mean...
We can't industrialize. We need to be, if we're going to do anything, it's going to have to be people to come, check it out, stay a little while, do this, do that, whatever.
I think that does help small businesses. I think we're sitting on an intersection of two major interstates. I think we're headed, a lot of people who drive by here are going to Yellowstone. But the problem is, a lot of people drive by here and go to Yellowstone. They stop in Idaho Falls and shop. And I think we need, well, it's like Barbara said, stronger business, more small business and a healthy economy here.
We have to support what we have here.
You've got to sustain what we've got first off.
Absolutely.
Before we spend more money to try to drag in more stuff.
Well, the, the city isn't what brings business in.
No.
The city can create opportunity for businesses to grow here and it can create opportunities for entrepreneurs to do various things. It can create opportunity. That's what a city can do. A city can never create business. Cities are not business people.
No, they'd, they'd probably squash it and they're tempted to do that.
So, yeah, we, what we can do really on the council is to, is to make this a... So, yeah, we, what we can do really on the council is to, is to make this a business-friendly community. It has not been a business-friendly community, and it needs to become one if we want to prosper.
No. You mentioned earlier, when we were talking about Old Town, you said some policy changes could be changed there. I was just wondering what, what you had in mind or what you think could be better.
Well, one of the problems right now, there really needs to be some research done on the demands that are being made on developers that are downtown. Because they are, it is, these are ancient buildings, you know, that are down there. They're a hundred years old.
Eighteen eighties, eighteen nineties, most of them.
And so, for the developers.
I know, I've worked on several of them.
Yeah, they're not allowing them to put apartments in them without making the building just like it was brand-new. And it's, it's cost prohibitive. That is why you're seeing downtown the way it is, is because they are not allowing them.
You have to come in with the helicopter and drop beans in from the top and run out.
To develop it. That actually is happening right now.
A lot of them are wood-framed, two, three stories, wood floors.
The buildings downtown, in fact, are, are far safer from a fire standpoint than any of the new houses on the hills that are parked next to a cedar tree.
It's 'cause they got asbestos, and that stuff don't burn.
Well, well, it's just like when the Monarch Theater, when the Monarch Building burned down there, everybody got out. Everybody got out. Well, old buildings, I mean, all of our new buildings are made with oil-based materials. They burn in a minute and a half. All new buildings are dangerous because of the carpets and the materials.
Lathan plaster takes forever to melt.
That's exactly right. Lathan, those old buildings are lathan plaster. They're very sound. Well.
But once you get a fire going in between things and stuff, there you got problems.
The demand is, and they're saying that this is a federal demand, and this is really what we have to research, they're saying that they have to put a sprinkler system in all of those buildings for them to do anything with them. Well, that makes it impossible for them to develop, because you're talking about investing upwards of $500,000 in an old building. You're never gonna get your money out of it.
See, that's the thing they're going into with the Monarch is.
They're not going to do that.
No.
Is for around $500,000, or, well, no, not $500, it's like, three and a half million or some dollars to do something to it. Is that the other thing?
Check, 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 check.
You know, they're still batting out around. I haven't, I don't know exactly where they're at on that right now. But that's one storefront, one facia that would look really bad, gone.
Yeah, they're trying, they're going to put a one-story building in there. To rebuild that building, it would have actually cost $5 million.
Yeah, to re, yeah.
To rebuild.
To do anything with this.
Well, those buildings are incredible, and it's.
Yeah, they are.
And you're right, if you go to downtown Boise, one of the reasons why it's vibrant and, and a lot of these old towns where they're vibrant, it's because they have people who live there.
Right.
They use apartments.
Well, and the nice thing, if, if we could get downtown developed, see, one of the things, if we look to the future, one of the things we have to be concerned about is we need a place for people to be on foot in this town.
Bicycles.
We, well, we can, we can assume that we're all going to have cars and oil forever. We can assume that.
It's done.
But we don't know what's going to happen in 25 or 30 years. We don't know how important it might be to have an area of this city.
We can have oil in 25 or 30 years.
Where people can be on foot. And just to have a place where people can congregate and be on foot and be together is really important in a community. And that is the only place that we can actually do that, because everything else has been developed to spread out.
That's true.
It's already developed to spread out.
You know, I've, I've heard, I mean, this could be deterring business in Old Town, too. I've heard that there's an extra tax or an extra fee placed on those in Old Town that the rest of the community doesn't pay.
No, that's exactly right. And, and it was from the standpoint of trying to develop it. But a lot of the things, again, like I said, we really need some changes in the planning and zoning. We need to really relook at what we're doing, because any place that that deters business.
Yeah.
Is unhealthy. Wherever it deters business. And you can want things to look a certain way, but that doesn't mean it's, it's financially viable, or it's practical. And one of the problems you have with planning and zoning, as well-intended as people are who are planning and zoning people, you have to remember, they are city employees, they have no vested interest in the property, and they are planning to spend money that's not theirs on it. So, they have no, they have no vested interest in it. So, it's, it behooves us to be concerned about the people who own those properties, and what they would like to do with those properties, to help it be economically viable. So, those are the people that we should really be concerned about.
Yeah.
That are down there.
Yeah, I, I agree. There's sort of an idea, I guess, that I've had, you know, in my mind about Old Town. You can tell me if it's a horrible idea or not, or if you like parts of it, but I, I think we ought to just scrap that extra tax that's on them, you know, get rid of it and bring the businesses in there. And as far as renovations go, I think that it would be a good idea just to, if the city or somebody could provide some sort of tax break or tax incentive to businesses who do renovate their own buildings. So, it's, it's, we're already getting rid of that extra tax, but then we're benefiting the businesses who want to renovate and want to make the building look nicer. And that would encourage the businesses to do that, because I think it would be an economic benefit to them.
Right.
You know, to, to do that. And that way, businesses are the ones fixing these buildings, not the taxpayers.
Sure.
Because that would cost taxpayers way too much to, to do that.
And you have to realize, a business is going to do what is in the best interests of their business. And they're willing, a lot of times, to develop things, but they have to do it in a way that's economically feasible. And the avenue the city can help with is to help make it economically feasible for them to develop these things.
Well, and they could do that by offering an economic incentive, you know, like a tax cut or something like that for, for fixing their buildings.
Well, one of the things, one of the things.
If I may interject, because.
Of course.
I know, I'm sorry I'm late, but at least I can get three minutes. That's usually all anyone gives me time for in this community.
Then who are you, sir?
I'm Idaho O'Rex.
Oh, hi. Nice to meet you.
Yeah, we have met.
I'm Barbara Orr.
So, if that's okay, may I?
Yeah, no, yeah.
Say some things, because I do agree with Barbara on Old Town. I've been working with Old Town and issues with Old Town and corruption in Old Town. And yes, the BID, Business Improvement District money, sometimes things have to evolve. There's no doubt about that. As many things. Sustainability, that's been a platform I've been on every time we come here, because we're limited, we're running out of water, we're running out of space. Sure, we can cut all the trees down, we can move the mountains, I suppose. We can do all kinds, move the tribe out of there, get out of the way and sprawl.
Idaho.
But these are not, what you say, what we call an ideal environment. Sustainability has to have balance between clean water, water available, never mind just clean, and air debris that's reasonable or, or healthy. But that's the kind of issue that most people know what I'm here for. I'm here, and I came here for, and working with the city and the county, to clean up the uranium contamination. The denial in this community is just amazing what it is. It just, you know, it reminds me of that movie, you know, Finding a Date for the End of the World, just watching the denial in there. Because it's taken a number of years now, and longer than anything I've usually worked on as a project like this, to get people to get out of that denial. But, of course, they've lived with it longer than anyone. Uranium contamination, we have the, we have the nuclear-free school zones going with Chubbick, where I've been promoting that issue every neighborhood we get into and organizing in this community. I am the director of the Win-Win Way, general coordinator for all the umbrella groups and organizations of Win-Win Way. I'm in issues with water preservation, the municipal watershed here. I'm almost decide what I'm not part of, including in the arts. So, we've just got one simple thing, either you're for the uranium cleanup or you're for the status quo of living with uranium. That's our ticket, and we'll go after, we'll continue, not just me, everybody I've worked with, after everybody who still wants to keep living with uranium and killing our children. Said it concisely as I can today. Thank you.
Boy, you did good.
All right. So, Idaho, your, your ticket.
Is that like thirty seconds left?
Your platform is.
My platform?
Yeah, we have three minutes. We're gonna wrap up here. So, your platform is cleaning up of uranium.
And the monies, and the, and the compensation for medical that's available to people for it. Yes, all of that here. Making it aware instead of being hidden and being resisted to share in this community.
Now, I hear that you claim that you could bring $10 billion into our community to clean up contamination.
On county record, when we were talking about $4 billion, and EPA has for any amount. They said it to me in a federal hearing, any amount. Of course, I was juggling a chunk of uranium at the time, which they were, let's say, damn, how sure, or hoping, not sure, hoping that I would not drop it and let it bust and fall into dust in that room. They watched every little toss. But, you know, that material in airborne form is very dangerous. The cleanup, Chubbick, does no longer want to be called Chub noble. Chubbick wants to be Chubbick. They've been the place that nobody wants to live, downwind of this contamination for, what, going on 70 years. Since the 1950s, anyway.
So, we're gonna give all, all the candidates, we'll start with Kevin, we're gonna give you three minutes to wrap up.
I forgot, we're, we're not live.
But.
Three minutes?
Yeah, so I'm, we're all gonna, gonna get three minutes, three minutes. And Idaho, you're gonna get three minutes. Then Ben and I, we'll have you guys leave the room, and we're gonna talk for like, 40 minutes.
So, you had to, so you didn't have that consideration yet?
Well, we gotta cut everything that guy said out, man. He's, uh, he's, ooh.
But like I said, I'm probably not going to cut much of this show. I'm running it like a live show. So, I would not act the fool in your three minutes, because there's a strong possibility, if you do, that'll be better for our viewing audience. We'll get some more entertainment value out of it, and we probably will show it, because we want the candidate.
Do we have a breather's realtor later?
Who our candidates are. And I want to thank all of you that have been here for participating, and for Barbara, for being on time, and participating. But I'm not gonna knock on people who weren't here on time, we're just glad you came. And I'm sure you have good excuses, but I'm not your teacher, so I don't want to hear. So, you have three minutes. Let's go, Kevin, starting with you.
I can stare longer than you can.
Okay. You have three minutes, you have three minutes, you can stare.
Well, a lot of things, cleanliness around the town, yep. Communication with people on a citizen-to-person, person basis, you know, getting out there and not just while you're getting, trying to get elected, but afterwards, possibly even having a, you know, one of those cheap phones that have a number that they could call you directly occasionally if they have a complaint or something. Because, you know, basically, these days, I'm kind of unemployed. I'm what you call medically disabled. Yeah, been a rough life, had a good time. The tribes, yes, very important issue of these days. We should do something with that pretty darn close to right now. That's, that should have been taken care of, the things that've been going on and gone on way too long with a lot of that. And let's see here, spending money, yeah, very sparingly to keep things up as opposed to making too much, too many more things to spend money on taking care of when they're used and then cleaning up. And, yeah, plus all the pretty yards and everything around these things we're building, it's taking a lot of water, could be used to have kilders and stuff live there, you know. Throw a little bit of gravel out there, and, you know, a little puddle here and there. And they'd be great to go. We gotta start living with nature, and we're within our means all the way around. It's like she was saying about 25 years, the oil thing. Guys, we ran out of oil. We're just living on borrowed time as far as the oil thing goes. And don't even want to go into what Henry Ford started. And Henry Ford, of course, already knew by the time it was too late. Gotta turn back? Well, can't do it. Everybody's fallen in love with the Model T. A lot better, you can run more corn liquor with a Model T than you can with a horse, so.
One more minute.
One more minute. Let me see here. Born here, raised here, know pretty much a lot of people all the way from homeless, walking the sidewalk on up. I'll call, have vast knowledge of this whole area as far as back, oh, about 100 years or so, before my family even moved here. My father hung out with, in fact, we did a lot of trading on the reservation, you know, in those days.
Okay, that's yours.
That's it? I'm done.
All right. Now, Barbara.
Okay.
Three minutes for you.
Okay. My name's Barbara Orr. I'm running for seat three. The election is November the 3rd. Please make a note of it so that you remember to vote. That's always hard in our busy lives. I'm running for city council because I want to see the city make some policy changes. In the 38 years that I've lived here, when I moved here, the population was 46,000. It's now 54,000. The only thing that's really grown in that time has been government. And we really need to make some policy changes to support business. The community needs to become way more business-friendly than it is. And there's all kinds of areas where we can improve. I'd like to see the city budget stabilized. I don't want us to grow anymore until the population actually grows. I'd like to see the city, and Jim Johnson had alluded to it, they're beginning to look at each department on a cost-for-use basis, which is really important, because we need to be as efficient as we possibly can in this city. We want to, we want to be able to grow the businesses here. We want to be able to sustain what we have in this wonderful community. One of my suggestions to people is please stop donating to tax-supported entities for any kind of building project that takes more land off of the property tax base. We are increasing our tax base by doing this. We've done it for years and years. We have plenty of wonderful venues. We have nine entertainment venues. We have 27 parks. We have lots of trails at a time when all of our children are confined because both of their parents are working. So, let's be realistic about the future. Please vote for me on November 3rd, and I will do everything I can to help make those policy changes for the city of Pocatello. Thanks.
Thank you, Barbara. All right, Idaho, you have three minutes.
Three minutes. Wow, isn't that a familiar sound? You have three minutes, no matter where I speak. What's wrong with five? You know, we should have went to five, you know? High five, five. But three minutes. Well, as I mentioned, I'm here to rid our community of corruption, because denial and cover up and do not tell leads to the corruption. The people who are involved in the past, sometimes it's gone through generations. But the majority of people here did not move here because they knew it was a contaminated community. It's not easy to learn something in a community that has one newspaper that rarely publishes anything. Television stations that almost never publish anything about it unless they take the corporate or the agencies, which in this case, EPA corruption in it, exposed, documented, and taking their view rather than the people who are the experts of this community. People have been here, people have come here, people have worked with these agencies, worked with FMC in the past, worked with Bannock Paving, worked for the, the city, and know the contamination. In fact, the word is misprisoned, felony of misprisoned. Everybody in the city council, except maybe Mr. Orr, is guilty of a federal crime. And that's because they maintain this. The living with uranium is insane. It's outrageous that a community, there are cleanups going on in this state, billions of dollars, we're reaching billions now, in terms of the Northern Idaho one, or now the Montana cleanup. People are getting cleaned up. This should have been at the top of the list of the EPA, because this stuff started when I came here, and probably even before that, when Donna Bowe was acting mayor of this community. You know, she's the only one that stood up. I presented the evidence, and everybody shot her down. Politics as usual. We don't want to disrupt the cart. School district, same thing. They still have it on their schools. The nuclear-free school zones is to stop people from bringing it in. Classic examples is Jefferson, Jefferson Street project that the city couldn't back out on. Here is Tendoy School, uranium parking lot right next to it, Alameda State right next to it. They all know, yet they don't want to tell anybody. They don't want to tell the parents. They don't want to bring panic. Rather than, how about clean it up? How about taking the money that's there available? How about taking the money that's there available to do it? Otherwise, we're gonna reach the point, it's like my discussion with Mike Crapo just the other day, we're gonna reach a point, well, which is more feasible in terms of finances? Buy out Chubbick and Pocatello, the whole region in a federal buyout, and move you all somewhere at some reservation, or clean it up. $10 billion goes a long way in cleaning things up. That's, when are we gonna begin? When are we gonna start?
This is the part of the show I call, "We Get to Talk Behind Your Back." But, we're not really gonna be talking behind their back, although we are, 'cause we kicked him out of the studio.
They'll get to see it on TV.
But it'll be on TV, so we just don't wanna be choked here. I'll tell ya, Kevin Perry was scary. So, yeah, he's gotta go out. But I like a lot of what Kevin had to say. You could see that he was a working guy, you could see that he's a serious guy, and that he cares about Pocatello, and that's great to see.
Yeah, he definitely has his issues there that he cares about, and, you know, I, I really, I, I liked, I guess what I liked about what he had to say is he felt like that the city needed to listen to the people better. Because that's important, because I do feel like the government, a lot of the times, does not listen to the people that they're supposed to be serving. And that kind of seemed to be his big issue, is he'd complain about things and tell, you know, city employees things, and, uh, they didn't take what he was, his complaints seriously, they didn't, they didn't respond to those. And I think it's important for, for local government to be responsive to the people that they serve, so that the people don't feel like they're being ignored. So that's kind of what I felt like his concern was, and, and to me, I mean, that's, that's a basic concern I think we all have.
Yeah, right. I think every one of us wants our city council members to listen to us, because they represent us. They represent Ben, and Paul, and Kevin, Barbara, you know, they represent us, Pocatello citizens. What else you think?
About Kevin? Okay, um, I'm trying to, I'm trying to think here. That, that might've been it, you know, for me, that was, that was the, that was the thing I got from him, and I, you know, I, I feel like that that is a, a basic thing that is important. I do feel that there are probably issues where you have employees working for the city that, that make a judgment on things, where they're like, well, that's not really that important, so then it goes ignored. You know, maybe there needs to be a change in policy as far as employees, where, you know, employees, they really need to, uh, I don't know, they need to respect, I guess, the people that are calling in, and be more responsive to responding to people's requests.
If I remember right, Ben, correct me, 'cause I'm wrong often, in Rome, when you were a citizen, you were a pretty important individual, it was a big deal to be a citizen in Rome. And I think in Pocatello, sometimes citizens were just looked at like we're a nuisance to city employees sometimes, and like, maybe I'm wrong here, but maybe Kevin doesn't get the response that he wanted, 'cause he wears a bandana and he doesn't, I mean, it, I, you know, and I don't know that for sure, but I think that everybody should be respected in our city, no matter if you make $10 an hour, or $3, $7 an hour, or $100 an hour.
Absolutely.
Well, you know, I think the Constitution says that we're all equal, and I think that's kinda how we should be treated.
Well, what the Constitution says is that everybody should be treated equally under the law, meaning the law treats everybody equally. And I don't know, if you have situations where the government or the law is treating one group of people better than another group of people, because, say they are looking at Kevin, and they're like, oh, that guy looks like a hippie, you know?
He's got a bandana on him.
Got a bandana, and they, and they don't take him seriously because of that, that's, that's a problem, because the law, you know, it, it, he needs to be treated as equally as every other citizen.
It guarantees equality.
Well, yeah, he, you know, the government should not treat people unequally, I guess. Everybody should be treated equally before law.
What about Barbara? What about Barbara Orr? Let's talk behind her back for a little while.
I was really impressed with Barbara Orr, to tell you the truth. I thought she was very knowledgeable on the issues, like she had a deep understanding, I felt, of, of a lot of problems going on in our community. And even though she's not a city councilwoman, I could ask her about, you know, an extra tax in Old Town, 'cause I don't know, that's just something I've heard, but I could ask her about that, and she knew the answer to it. She said there was an extra tax in Old Town, which I think is, I think that's a bad idea. But she was very knowledgeable about the issues, I thought she had a lot of really good ideas. Um, I, I think she's right when she says that the, the city's process of, uh, of bringing businesses into this community, that that process could be simpler and less complicated and, and convoluted. I, I think she's right about that, I think it could be, I think that it could be simpler. And she wasn't saying that we shouldn't have, you know, that process, you know, where they, where they kind of, what's the word, I'm trying to think here, where they kind of vet different businesses. But she said it needs to be simpler and less intrusive, and it needs to be something that isn't chasing businesses out of the community.
Right.
Um, and I, I think that she's right about that, and, and I could see where that being a, a government process, if that's something that's grown more complicated as the years have gone by. 'Cause it seems like they always have to build on top of what they have, and, and when they do that, when they grow that, that process, they, they make it more complicated. It's kinda like our tax code is too complicated, you know, we've had, you know, a lot of years where they've added loopholes here, and, and really, it's a, I mean, it's a complicated mess, and I, to tell you the truth, I think that the, the tax code needs to be thrown out, and we need to have a simpler tax code where, where people could do their taxes on one page, you know? I, I really do believe that, you know, and, and it, it needs to be a lot simpler, and I, I, I just felt she was very smart, and she was, she was sharp.
Well, I'll say this for Barbara. Barbara came here prepared, Barbara spoke for the citizens' rights. I totally back her. I think, you know, what she had to say was spot-on, and I think if she was in, I've been to a city council meeting, and she'd listen, and she, she has knowledge, and she could ask questions, and she's, yeah, I think she's a powerful candidate, and she believes, I like her vision of Pocatello, I do, I like what she had to say. Respect Barbara Orr and where she's coming from, and, so let's talk about Idaho Lorax real quick.
Um, I kind of wish that he would've come in here earlier. He came in here and presented what he, you know, his big concerns, which I think is good, that's important for him to come in here and, and air his concerns. I just kinda wished that I could've had the opportunity to ask him more questions like the, like we got with each of the other candidates. Because, uh, I don't know, Idaho Lorax, you know, I, I wanted, I wanted to ask him about, um, recycling nuclear waste, because, I mean, he, he seemed to really care deeply about the nuclear issue, and the federal government is blocking efforts to recycle nuclear waste and use it for energy, meaning, uh, this nuclear waste that they're just dumping on land somewhere, you know, this actually has energy uses-
Right, yeah.
And, believe me, the energy uses with that is far better than, than wind power. I mean, the amount of energy that that produces is, is, is beyond greater than most of the energy production we've got going in this country, but instead, we're just dumping it, and when you do that, it is pollutive to the environment, but if we were recycling that, that nuclear waste and, and, and using it for energy, I could see that as being beneficial for jobs, I could see that as being beneficial for the environment-
I think there's-
-because it's not just being dumped out there. Um, so I did, I did wanna ask him about that, and there was another issue I wanted to ask.
Oh, about him being kicked out of the city offices, possibly, or?
No, Ben, I'm sure that's a question you wanted to ask him about.
Not really.
Not really, no.
Just kidding.
No, that, the question I wanted to ask him about was during his last campaign for, for mayor, um, I remember seeing pictures of Mayor Blad's signs that he'd actually plastered his name over, you know, Lorax, and I mean, technically, that's, that's illegal because that's vandalizing. So I did wanna ask him about that, because I know when I vote for people, I wanna vote for somebody who follows the law.
Right, right.
So, I just wanted to ask him what his feelings were on that, and I, I, I think that that's a legitimate question to ask him, because that's-
Oh, sure.
I mean, that's on the public record, you know, it was in the news, you know, where there was the Mayor Blad sign with Lorax, you know, plastered over the top of it.
Okay, let's move on from Lorax, we only have like a couple minutes-
We will, we will.
And Jim Johnson, Jim Johnson, let's, two minute, two minute, Jim Johnson.
I thought Jim Johnson presented himself well. He, I thought he did a good job answering the questions and sort of defending what he believed in. I, I think you could actually see kind of the differences between Jim Johnston and Barbara Orr, I thought, in some ca, in some cases, especially on the, uh, the issue about the process of vetting businesses that come in here. He seemed, at least from my observation, he seemed much more favorable in what they've been doing as far as vetting businesses, whereas she felt like it really needed to be simplified and, and made simpler. That was, that was my observation, where there was kind of, there wasn't a huge rift there, like there wasn't a huge difference, but you could tell there was a little bit of a difference of, of opinion there, and where, you know, she seemed just a little bit more conservative in that area than, than Jim Johnston. But on other issues, Jim Johnston, I thought, you know, presented a very conservative, you know, message here for, for conservatives that are out here, you know, that are, that are watching this. He, he talked about, uh, things that the city where it was, you know, that was starting to do, that, that, uh, even Barbara Orr, she-
That 32nd.
She said that she was, you know, very thankful that they were doing that, you know, and, um, yeah, I, I thought he, he came here and did a good job answering the questions, and, um, I think, I think he does bring good things to the table, you know, with his business record and, and, you know, his, his experience.
So here's what I'm gonna say. Idaho Lorax is very pro-cleanup, Jim Johnson was very pro-Pocatello. Uh, I love their interviews, love their interviews, I took a lot from this myself. That's Pocatello, let's talk about something, we're gonna wrap this show up.